All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order tonight. Uh Dave, you do roll call for us please.
Cody.
Uh present.
Mark.
Present.
And.
Present.
Jennifer.
Present.
And I am present.
Uh at this time, those that are able, please send for the pledge in the corner there. Pledge of.
Pledge of. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone. Uh Board of Education guidelines. Uh with open mind will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members being respectful of them. We work collaboratively with district administrator by having open, honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders and monitor key indicators so that equal teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate success academics, arts, and athletics. And then we'll go into our public comment period. Uh public comments during this period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from the public on any item not on the agenda. Please note, it's a pursuant of state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you, but they may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have the three minutes to speak. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. Uh so with that being said, at this time, are there any public comments? All right. And then uh CWSA update.
Yes, so we're doing the end of the year uh evaluation and um organization. So seeing how the year went and we just got the report filed, so thank you Dr. Black. Uh the one thing that I wanted to bring up though is one of the large efforts I want to put forward is recruitment. So we see a lot of parents that want to be involved in the governance board, but I'm looking for more community members or retired teachers. I'm looking for any resources, any people I could reach out to. I can always look for people at the mill, but I would prefer to go through, have some of the community ca- community members that have gone through education as well to be a part of that governance board. With Nita leaving, um that was a large resource that we lot- lost and I'm trying to help fill that role and to diversify the governance board as a whole, so. If anyone has any ideas and can contact me, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Is there a deadline when to get on or to to reach out?
No, elections are in May, so that's typically the best time for members to join, but people are, the public is more than welcome to join the meetings and get a feel for it and see if they can help contribute.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any questions for tonight's update? All right.
A note is that CWSA made the evening news in Michigan.
That's right.
Really?
Do you wanna talk about that one Jimmy, or do you want me to take?
Yeah, well, please, go ahead.
You're going.
Okay, they, yeah, they made the evening news and they, their hot air balloon landed in Michigan, so their big objective was to get across the ocean. Um so they're still working towards that goal, so really cool.
That's awesome.
Got to cross one big pond.
Yeah, yes, it did. Yeah, it was a very interesting story. Uh side note, uh Chris Goodwin will be heading to Michigan. Uh leaving to uh Friday, he'll be there. Um he's gonna collect the, the weather balloon and, and all the apparatus. In the meantime, he'll be um interacting with a middle school over there, kinda teaching a lesson on brahmic pressure and all that other fun stuff. Uh but the hope is to bring the balloon back and give it another launch and uh learn from their mistakes and hopefully eventually make it to Europe, so.
Nice.
That's awesome.
All right, we're gonna move into communicating with the board. Uh superintendent's report.
All right, well, start out superintendent's report, I have some phenomenal news that we just learned over the weekend that we're very excited about, so we just, we learned that four of the teachers in Nacusa School District passed their National Board Certification. For not, those not familiar with it, National Board Certification is an extremely rigorous course. That stu- teachers are videotaping themselves, right, analyzing data, looking at their practice, writing reflections. This is normally a process that takes anywhere between, can be done as little as one, but it usually takes up to five, you know, generally between two, three, five years. And at this point, and just, this is a very hot, this, think about the effort going on, this is very much equivalent to a master's degree or things like that. And we had four, the thing is, you take, you finalize, you put all your stuff in in April, and you don't get your results back till December, so everyone's been sitting on the shoulders of needles for six months. And we learned that four of them passed um over there, just those nine, so number first of them is Sarah Lawton at Humke Elementary. She takes care of, uh she's, helps all the English language learners in our district, but she also teaches library sciences and be able to help um runs a rotation to be able to teach research and library things for all the students at Humke. Very much congratulations to her. Um second one is Cheryl Esser, she is at Alexander Middle School, she teaches um students with intellectual um so, who need additional support, teaches in the RISE room, and she's um just thrilled and just did a great job with it. Another one, and the um also is Caleb Bile, um social studies teacher, grade seven and grade eight, also at Alexander Middle School. And also Tori Jostin, the seventh grade math teacher, also at Alexander Middle School. And so we have those four who passed, we have an additional eight in the district at this time who are on, who are working to certify or working in that process. So really, this is just, if you talk, especially for a district our size, to have this mu- cohort that's encouraging each other, helping each other. This has been, we've been building up this for several years, but four to pass and more on the way, and just a note that this, of all the, you know, you can get master's degrees, you can do other things, but this makes a huge difference as far as effectiveness and understanding how your students are learning, you're effective as a teacher. We're beyond excited and um impressed with our staff, so we're just giving them a massive shout out here.
Congratulations to those teachers and those that are still stuck.
Yes, so a couple of notes, and so yesterday evening, the several members of the board together with administration, we met with a couple consultants on what's known as a future search process. The goal is in, in April, we'll be holding community conversations with why con- for people, all, everybody connected with Nacusa in the community to get an idea of where do we wanna be ten years from now, where do we wanna go? Um what, what roles do this kind of schools play in helping us be part of it as a community drawing people together? So this was initial meetings, helping us understand some ways that this has been done. We're led by Drew Halick and Debbie Brewster who visited together with us, and they've structured this for fifty other school districts over this last several years in the state of Wisconsin. And basically, the goal is to be able to really involve the community, basically, one of the things, talking with Drew, he says, only get me involved if you're going to get your um community involved and you're gonna listen to them. To really, and that is a big prospect, and that is a big goal of ours, to be able to help them. Especially in, as a superintendent year one, we want, we're here to serve the community, that is what, this is, uh, public service is what we're here for. And this is a process where we're engaging to really help get perspectives from around the community and get, see how we can build partnerships, but also how we can work together, so that'll be coming up in April, more updates I'll give along the ways, and we're starting the process now. Um one just, this is sort of more of a technical note, I sent out a parent square today, everybody regarding snow days. Um fortunately, doesn't look, looks like the weather's gonna be warm through the, around the twenty twenty-three, so don't worry about that one. But just as a note, and just a quick Cliff Notes version of it, um we are going to be, we have two snow days built into our schedule, so if two hit, we're already good, we're planning, and most years, that's fine. Last year, it was not, there was a huge amount that we had. And so in, in the event that we have more, and by the way, also a note is that if we have a snow day, we're gonna make the call on the morning of. We're gonna, just face, we had, we've had several years, days over the past few years where a call was made and we could have been at school. And so it's short, it's not so fun with the short-term planning, but long-term, if there's less disruption, long-term making up, more learning happens. And so a note is that if we have any additional days beyond the two, we have to make up, our plan is to on the day of the snow day, just have everybody take that off, but we'll make that up as part of a virtual learning day on an in-service day in our calendar. So a day that the teachers can prepare, the students can prepare, it's not last minute what we can pull together, but the best learning happens, especially remotely when you're prepared. And so grades K through five are sending packets home, six through twelve will be learning online. Everybody has a Chromebook in those grades, uh one-to-one on Schoology, working out details, but we sent that out to the community, so um our snow day plans are out in case there's any questions. Please contact our schools. And one um final note in here is one thing that the board asked, so at our last board meeting, we had a report on fall athletics. And talking about what participation was, and one, the question was, was asked is not just fall, but what are some other um club? And so if I could refer, everybody at the table has one of these, and there's some on, on there as well, this is basically a snapshot of here are the various Nacusa High School clubs that are run, and here's the enrollments they have. Now, this is a rolling document, I basically, this is a snapshot of the day, and so I said, December twenty twenty-three, I'll update it again at a later point. But just as a note, and so Nacusa High School has two hundred and eighty-one students. A total, total club enrollment, if you add up all the numbers, everyone attending all these, is a hundred and seventy-five. Now, that's a little misleading, if you'll, if the actual students involved, there's a hundred and eleven of them. Yes, I counted. Um and for that, sixty-eight students are participating in one club, twenty-five students are participating in two clubs, fourteen are participating in fourteen clubs, and four are participating in four clubs. And so they're staggered, this happens um at various times, especially during the lunch hours, when most of that falls. And um but that is, just as a note, that we have a very robust means, and clubs can come and go, and there's, and there's ver- there's variety in those, what student needs are. And so you also see the, we're, we're grateful for all the advisors who are involved to create this student experience for them. Um but just to give you that update on the student activities involved, uh the clubs and NHS are a large part of that.
Thank you for that, and you said it's gonna be a rolling document?
Right, and so I'll basically just give period, I'll just each, like this is December, probably three months from now, we'll give basically, when we give athletic updates, I'll just make a point of making this alongside them, so that we can look at all student activities together.
Thank you for doing that question.
How does, how does funding work then for clubs?
I'm gonna pivot over to Mr.
They are largely, it's fundraising, they do a lot of fundraising. Um that's, yeah, that's now with concessions, the way that concessions now works, that has helped out a lot, where they have a pretty easy on-ramp, on-ramp to getting funds, because they, a club works concessions, they get the money, you know, to get a portion, they get usually sixty dollars per um event that they can raise, so some of the clubs are, some of the clubs are really non-cost, you know, like nerds of the roundtable, which is a self-named um club, I was gonna point out. That one is a game club, and so they have no expense, you know, they play Dungeons and Dragons, Magic, they do different, um usually different strategy type games. Yearbook, there is some uh budget from the, the building budget for yearbook, but it's minimal. Um and that one is largely self-funded, because yearbook sales cover the, the cost of it. Student Council, they do some fundraising, FCCA, they do fundraising, FBI, they do fundraising. Um National Honors Society does have some fundraising they do for their own club, but most of it is, you know, sent off to charities. Uh Chess Club, they do fundraising, but then they also charge to um participants for like meets and different things like that. But a big one for Chess Club is working at Pumpkin Fest, they pick up all the trash for both days of Pumpkin Fest and, and do very well with it. Uh Key Club is also, Key Club is associated with Quanis Club, and so there's a, a parent organization, if you will, that's there for some help. Link Crew, because of the work they do with freshmen, there is some building budget money that goes to Link Crew um to support. But most of theirs is also through fundraising, they do an event at Homecoming Week that brings in the bulk of their fundraising. Law Enforcement Club, uh they have at times received donations from the Nacusa PD, obviously, they're associated quite closely with the Nacusa Police Department, but then also they do a, a lot of fundraising. The three D printing club, they just use the three D printers at school, and they're always designing things and doing work, and that's a brand-new club. Mr. Peters just started that one this year, and that's probably um three D printing and Key Club have been our two big ones this year that have taken off quite a bit, and then FCA um is another one that does complete fundraising, no district funds are used for FCA.
So according to the state, these are self-sustaining funds, they have to be. Um so there typically is no district funds that, that fund these, uh they're expected to do the fundraising. They're kind of standalone um activity accounts, basically, so.
So they put their, when they get some, some money, they put it in an account that you pay.
Yeah, and it rolls right, it rolls over, it never really hits district funds at all, it doesn't go into the general fund. It rolls over, so they always maintain or retain those, those funds.
So, well, thanks again for getting that information to us, any other questions? All right, so we are gonna go back over to Lynn Knight, our business manager.
So just to expand on the national honors, um national honor. Thank you, national boards. So um I belong to a Wisconsin Valley Association Regional, and it consists of about thirty-five uh school districts uh throughout central Wisconsin. And we talk about the national boards and how, um how many teachers are involved in the national boards at, you know, the district level. And uh districts like Wassa and Stevens Point don't have as many as Nacusa, which is truly, truly amazing. Um so we, that puts us up into the elite area in, in my mind. So I just, you know, I just, I wanted to um just talk about that because uh when the compensation committee met, the national boards was really important um for that committee, and I'm really happy to see that our teachers are benefiting from that, so. It's just a, it, it just, it, it makes our committee proud that we helped in that, in that um endeavor, so.
So Lynn, do you know the cost of having to do that?
I, I don't know, no.
I mean, does anybody know what, what the cost is involved for the national board? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's been a while, it was.
I'm just curious, and that comes out of their pocket, right?
Yeah, I wanna, the last.
So Mr. Julius did national boards when he was a teacher.
Yeah, it was close to twenty-five hundred that uh was out of pocket expense, now that was also if you passed. Now, I do want to say that um not every teacher goes for it, right? And of the teachers that go, only about forty percent actually pass, I mean, it is a, it is a process. Um it is really, you do a deep dive into your teaching and, and how are your kids learning? Uh so I can't emphasize enough how um valued that is, and it, and it's exciting that we do honor that, because it is a lot of work, and I really do think it impacts teaching. You can go get a master's in anything, but it may not change classroom practices where I think national board certification does. Um but, yeah, it's, it was close to twenty-five hundred the last time that I remember looking. That may have changed, 'cause they've changed where you can do it in stages now, but I don't know what that cost is.
Okay.
And Lynn, I know that um, I don't know if the other schools are giving like a, like a stipend or whatever, probably not, so.
No, they're not.
That's just kudos to the compensation committee too, 'cause that will extra incentive to get that out there, so.
Absolutely, and kudos to the board for approving that, always. So at your um, at your table uh is the uh financial report for twenty-two uh twenty-three. So I typically present this and ask for board approval in the January board meeting. Um you always have the option for the auditor to come and talk about this. Um it doesn't make really any difference to me, uh it's a clean audit, so if you want the auditor to come and talk about it, fine, or I can handle it, it doesn't um whatever your preference, preference is, so uh if you wanna look that over. Um and if I could know quickly, so I could probably get on the auditor's agenda if, if they, if you do wish to have them.
Sure. I think that if anyone has any outstanding questions, they could reach out to Lynn to clear, clarify some things, or something beyond that, reach out to, to Lynn or myself or Nathan, and we'll. So I don't know if you have a deadline when you wanna hear from us, but probably by like the end of the year.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Sounds like it.
That's all I have.
Perfect. Uh questions then for Lynn? All right, please take some time to surf through that between now and the end of the year. Um then reach out to Lynn for questions, or Nathan or myself to set something up with the auditor, so. Uh Brian Girl, I don't see him here tonight. Um so we will skip past that section, and our student representative is probably an athletic event maybe, so not sure if she left anything but Keith this time around.
Yeah, I've got a little bit. Um so she sent, uh holiday spirit week, we've been doing twelve days of Christmas, been going well. Student Council has incorporated dress-up days as well as games and activities during advisory. Uh for sports, winter sports are in full swing, um boys' basketball is at four and two, girls' basketball is at two and seven. Both teams exceed major improvements from last year, continue to add more wins to their records, wrestling has competed in a few tournaments and has had a duel, the girls' wrestling team did very well over the weekend, finished in second place. And there are a lot of returning wrestlers and, and a lot of new ones, they've done some great recruiting, and so the season looks to be promising for all winter athletics. And other than that, that's the report.
Uh congratulations to those athletic teams, uh wish some continued success throughout the rest of the winter. And we'll head into policy governance now, R two academic performance. Um if Nathan, if you wanna read just the, the statement on top there for us.
I say, um R two academic performance application. All students regardless of their race, gender, disability, and or socioeconomic status will be literate in reading, language arts, and math. All students will be able to integrate and apply the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and competencies acquired across all academic disciplines.
We had a, a very lengthy but positive conversation last week at our board workshop um revolving around R two. Um we highlighted a lot of growth in E L A, and that uh literacy has been, um you know, the main focus um for prior years. Um and we also kinda highlighted some areas with the, the middle school um and the high school focusing on um better achievements, kind of something around math in the, in those areas too, so um I know that there's like a focus group going on around math to kind of get a little bit more training and, and planning with the students on those levels, so. I wanna open up to comments with other board members that wanna mention anything, or uh the principals as well, or Nathan?
So just as a, as a summary of it, we are, our overall academic progress has, is an uptick since last year, but just as a note is that we had, we're still working to, um there, our, our report cards overall were much stronger before COVID came down, we're working our way back up on them. Um our growth is very strong, um our students are growing at, for a year's time in class, they're growing at least that, that year, and that's working there. Overall, average achievements, that's an area that we need to work, just a, a, a district priority is, it's not just enough to have average growth, we're investing in the things that help us have exceptional growth. We've closed the gaps, meet the needs, and that is something just, and that is the priority and the focus of helping our students be prepared to succeed, and so we're tracking the growth, we're tracking achievement, we're looking at all these, and this is um just filtering into governing how, how we work.
I heard, I mean, I, I heard one person asked me a question about something with the, is it the reading program or something that Humke there? I'm trying to remember now, I had so much stuff going on. That the program, there's a program we're using at Humke that's not that somebody, there's, there's an issue with the, the program.
I would note that the process that we're using, the, I'd say that there's, at Humke, I'd be, if you have some specifics, I'd be glad to please route those to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to verify some of the specifics on it, I thought they said it was a read, like a reading program, and they threw a name at me and I and I, that there was a, like there was an accreditation that was removed from some.
Well, a note is that, that we do not use a pro, we do not use a canned exterior program such as you're describing at Humke. One of the processes that they're using is to be able to, and that they've been, in, in this year, they're working, they've built their own um literacy curriculum. And at Humke, you're teaching not just literacy, but they teach also, at the same time, they're doing social studies and sciences as part of the same processes that are going with those, and those are up, there's been a lot of do-it-yourself, build that together, and so and we've been tracking, and certainly with the Act Twenty literacy law is where there are some things that came front that they said you can't teach in these certain ways that they put, but we're in compliance, we're working, and so just for, if there are specific questions, that that's been in the educational discourse because of the literacy laws been passed.
Possible that, that those may be old news, that somebody was referencing something that was previously used.
It, it could be, but.
The current use anymore, but.
But to that, I would say that we started, one of the literacy components that started this year at Humke was there is a new phonics program that we're starting, but it certainly is highly recommended, highly vetted, it is in line with highly recommended and used among the state, and it showed to have strong outcomes, and so that is one that, that was, that's one of the areas, and so that would be the, the only literacy program we're using at Humke to that area, as the other ones are designed in-house and vetted and worked on those type of things, so um but, and I can confirm those things are in line with state statutes and those type of laws, even with the new literacy ones that came in place.
I was gonna say, I think, I think the biggest thing that stood out to me in our conversation last week is that you know, all schools are being intentional getting equity in, in all areas um of the curriculum, which is nice, so.
And when we had that meeting at the workshop, I loved it with the, the principals, 'cause they talked about how the PLC and they're coming together and they're all working together. So I mean, they're doing the best that they possibly can, as far as I can see.
Any other uh board comments? All right, I'm gonna look for a motion then.
Cool.
Get a motion on the floor.
A second.
Second, uh those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you everyone.
Uh other board work or review of emergency action drills, so we have uh John Thomas in tonight.
Yeah, so we have um every year, uh we have to do two unannounced drills for our district as part of the school safety. Um Diana has the reports from that, I'd be looking for signatures, a brief overview of it, um at Humke, we do it a little bit differently, uh Officer Cole, our SRO, goes in and pre-teaches all the kids, uh Alice drills, a lockdown evacuation safety like that, and then uh with partnership with the Nacusa Police Department, we had gone room to room, uh the kids modeled, demonstrated uh what it would look like if they had to give COVID to an emergency situation. Uh took us about twenty minutes during that time. Um there were no issues that came up, um teachers, uh and even the guest teachers on that day had knowledge of how to uh use the barricade should they choose, uh also the practice we've had of uh keeping our doors locked and shut during the school day has benefited as well. Uh at the middle school, uh we went into a practice, a simulation, emergency lockdown with an intruder alert, so the message that staff received was during the drill, there, the intruder was down in the art hallway. Uh staff was instructed to make their decisions based on what they would do, if they were evacuating, just go to the exit, that they would uh evacuate if they were doing lockdown. Uh that all staff members uh replied to myself and Officer Cole about what their choice was during that time, along with any questions they might have. Uh the Nacusa High School, that one actually took only about five minutes, uh with the police department, we were able to check all the doors, everybody was secure. Uh at the high school, uh we did the same one um with the intruder uh down the art hallway. Along with the administration and the police, we were able to conclude that one in about ten minutes with no issues that were known. Uh staff had communicated out uh with some questions uh that we answered, concerns if there were any, and just what they did to respond in that situation.
It sounds like all three schools did, did good, and it was kind of a good time for you to do that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and they knew there was a unfortunate event that happened a couple of states away, so I think it was good timing, it's good to hear that it, it didn't take too long on the school day either, so.
Yeah, the continued support of making sure our students are safe on our campuses during the day has been tremendous, so we wanna keep going down that road.
I think last year, there were some, still a few issues with some of the speakers and things like that, as far as like the notification in parts of buildings, is that?
Yeah, so some, some of them that we came across last year were like in our gym areas, um were unable to hear, uh since then, they've added on um flashing lights when there, there's something goes on there, uh to get the notification there. Uh our, Eric has been working with the companies to fix all those, and, and you can see with the safety ones, now we have uh the new upgrades that were approved by the board that are continuing there, so. Officer Cole and I continue to go around each summer to do our own checks of it as well, uh but as, as of here, there are not, no known ones that need fixing, at times Steve Hirschberg is taking care of all the exterior ones to fix those as well.
Is there anything more that any of the schools need, or was just a pretty good check out across the board, anything? Any low-hanging fruit or something, I know that, I know that the new security system must have, I mean, it's probably a good.
That's a dangerous question, Cody.
So, uh the new, uh the new security system has been a, a blessing with the cameras and, and entrance to our facilities at this time. Um that is a great asset to us, and should there be anything else, we'll talk at the end once.
Sounds good. Well, there was also, I mean, there was discussion about like redoing some of the entrances and things like that, is that still in the works, or?
That'll be a discussion for referendum time, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The scope of doing that is not install something, that would be reworking, and so really, it'd be a matter of exploring needs and our status on those.
Okay.
Yeah, Officer Cole and I continuously do interior and exterior door checks, uh our, our facilities are very secure.
So are the cameras all up and running now? So are the cameras all up and running now or?
Depends on which school. At uh the middle school, they have, I I think it was eighty-six percent. I think we're at the high school of the interior. They've been working on the exterior as well. Um, I'm not sure on Humke's. That was the next step in it. Uh, but AMS, I have utilized it. It has been an amazing system.
Good, good to hear. Um, any other uh questions?
Once that, once the camera system is up and running, we can certainly have Eric come back and he can kind of show you, you know, how it works then too, if that's okay.
Well, was there like an estimated date, or is it ongoing?
Um, it's gonna be after the new year, because, yeah, um, uh staffing at uh Heartland has been tough.
Sure.
So, we're trying.
All right, um, at this time, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the review of emergency action drills.
So move.
Uh, motion on the floor by Mark.
A second.
Seconds. Uh, those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, consent agenda, no reservations or retirement. Uh, we do have a new hire Karen Reed uh at the Humke Elementary School Behavior Interventionist, so welcome um, the district. And then, uh, Dave, would you like to read the donations to them?
Certainly. Uh, we have Port Edwards, United Methodist Women donated two hundred dollars for lunch debt assistance, uh box of cranberries from the family of Brennan Wolf, fourth grader. Um, Rainbow Chapter number eighty-seven, Order of the Eastern Star donated one thousand dollars, five hundred for Backpack for Kids and five hundred for Families Helping Families Fund. Backpack for Kids, we have eighty-five dollars from Bethel and Lutheran Church, fifty dollars from George Holland. Urco Worldwide donated nineteen thirty-dollar gift cards to Pick and Save. Twenty-five dollars from Sacred Heart Collections, five hundred dollars from Dick and Ann Bennett. Four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents from Jolly Jingle Event. The event was held at Nacusa High School to bring the community together and raise money for the backpack program. The Lions held bingo in the library and a bunch of vendors sold their things. Quilt raffles, donors wanted, wanted to remain anonymous, and the COPO raised uh the most money for their, for the donation. Renee Thurber and Olive, Olivia Bo Boye, uh co-hosted this event. Thank you all for your donations. We appreciate it.
You can tell a lot of people are in the Christmas spirit in our community, so it's, it's good to see.
So does anybody know how many families are being helped this year? Like, how many backpacks are going up? Do you know, Lynn?
Um, I think it's close to maybe thirty or thirty-five.
God.
Paul Leeper is actually the one who manages it now, which is a, it's, it is awesome. He does a phenomenal job, so. You probably could, you know, get him in here if you want to have a little presentation.
So it's still run by the, by the academy, academy still puts it?
Yeah, they're.
Pardon?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, it'd be nice if he came in just to do a small presentation as to how it's going this year, you know, just to keep people updated. Because you might get more donations that way. I mean, you never know.
So I'll, I'll, I'll connect with them and I'll circle back. Sounds good.
Yeah. That's awesome.
And thank you very again um to all of our donors this month. Uh, minutes, we had our regular board meeting on the fifteenth of November, and then this month, we had our workshop on the sixth, another board workshop on the seventh, and then uh one more on the eleventh. Uh, we did meet with Lee Pritzl, so it was really nice to kind of get a good a good grasp, or they go around the district and kind of get more of a team, team aspect going on, um, with the board meetings and workshops. And was there anything you wanted to add about the Lee Pritzl's workshop?
No, again, just Lee Pritzl works with our board to be able to, as the former superintendent himself, advisor to boards across the United States, uh, just ways to be highly functioning and serve students, and so we're grateful for his guidance and uh it's, it's helpful, especially for someone as I'm learning ropes, to be able to, you know, show, walk alongside.
Our teachers uh do professional development so that they become better teachers for their students. And Lee Pritzl comes in and does professional development for the board so that we can become better board members for our community.
It's a good way to put it.
That's what he's like.
All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to uh approve the consent agenda as presented.
So.
Motion on the floor.
A second.
Seconds by Ann. Those all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried. Uh, featured in the items, the third will have a board workshop. Um, and then the tenth looks like will be a regular board meeting at six thirty. At this time, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion on the floor, second. Those all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good holiday season if you're up seeing inside.